All right. Good afternoon. Today is Tuesday, May 13th at 4:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Akushnet Board of Selectmen. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. As a reminder, this meeting will be audio and video recorded. Please rise for the questions.
(inaudible)
All right. We have a bunch of poll hearings. This is a continuance from the April 29th, 2025, and May 2nd, 2025 meetings for petition number Mass. 2024-23, petition Mass. 2024-25, petition Massachusetts 2024-26. Anthony, or whoever is, I know Kevin, you were out there talking to these guys.
No, thanks for having me here tonight. I thought Verizon's contractor would be here, but I'm happy to answer those questions. I think we did a little slight visit, so I think...
So there was a couple that I questioned last time, Mr. Chairman. One of them was 284 Middle Road. I met with EverSource, Anthony, and a couple of the staff engineers that were on the project, and they've agreed to move the pole on from that property line 23 feet north for the support line.
Yep.
And the resident was, happened to be out there with me. And then we went out to Mendel Road, and I believe it's...
55. Well, across from 44.
Yeah, across from 55 or whatever on that side of the road. And they're good with the pole being moved five feet to the right of the mailbox.
Yep.
Where we stood. So they're all set with that as well. So I don't have any other really concerns. The only thing that I would ask from EverSource while you're here is, when I was with you on Middle Road, you mentioned it was due to a solar field proposed in the White's Dairy Field.
That's another poll. I think that's for the 17th of June.
Okay, so that was just, that one is just the one. But you said you're gonna redo all those polls?
Yep.
So while I have you here, Anthony, maybe you can talk to your company instead of double-polling and having them sit around for so long. That solar field hasn't even been approved.
Okay.
Through Concom and Planning Board yet. And then we have that connection, you know, some connection agreement that they gotta get from you and everything else. So I would just ask that you don't, some of these poles are being put up for solar fields. If the solar field's not gonna be completed for two years out, can you just not go out and start slamming poles in the ground for something that's not gonna come to fruition for a couple of years down the road?
I'll take that back.
Just keep that in mind. I know this one, particular one at 284 is a support line.
Yep.
That's fine. But any other future ones due to solar farms, just keep that in mind, right?
Yep.
Because, you know, by the time they get Planning Board approval, and then it gets built, and then connection fee or whatever it is, connection, whatever that thing's called.
Yep.
For you guys to get it done.
Sure.
Just try to close that gap so you're not setting poles two years in front of a project being completed. That's all I ask. Put that, have some consideration when you're planning, that's all.
All right, so we got these three. The Mass petition 2024-23, 24-25, 24-26. Do we need a motion to approve?
Before you guys do that, can I just ask, can you put that on the permits? That it's, the specific measurements, 23 feet, and then the five feet?
But that's not, I don't think that's this one. I think that's the last one.
Yeah, we'll get to the last one.
He's gonna get to that 284 Middle Road one.
All right.
We'll put it on the permit for the other one. I'll make sure...
Yeah, just because...
Building, is it building? Or is it our permit?
It's yours. This is a green location. That comes right from you guys.
From our office? Can we just make sure, I'll talk to you, Sydney, later off camera. I'll make sure that on that particular one from Mendel Road, we put that.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Yeah.
Location.
All right, so we got...
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next petition is continued from April 29th, 2025, May 2nd, 2025. Mass petition 2024-40 from Verizon New England Inc. and N-Star Company doing business with EverSource proposing new facilities. Pole 104 55 dot 5 on Middle Road. Middle Road install one mid-span pole 104 55 dot 55 on the east side of Middle Road, which will be approximately 865 feet. Southwesterly from the center line of Paris Lane, the new pole will be installed in line at approximately 86 feet south of existing pole 104 height slash 56, and approximately 106 feet north of the existing pole 104 55. Installation being requested by EverSource to support the existing pole line to keep the wire at a safe height over the driveway of the property at 284 Middle Road. Any issues there, gentlemen?
No, Mr. Chairman. Someone I just talked about, 23 feet from the property line with a proposed pole location's going.
All right. There's no other issues? Is the motion to approve?
Sydney, I'll talk to you. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sydney, before you issue any of these, can, before you do that, I'll have to review it, would you, okay? To make sure that these pole locations have been changed.
All right, Anthony, while I got you, great work over by Scuttlebutts. Do you know when that pole's gonna be taken out?
Yeah. So next to go on those poles, basically from pole 66 to about 150, is municipal fiber.
Okay.
So that's town-run fiber. I think you guys have Comtrack right now doing some new fiber connections throughout the town.
So that pole in the middle of the parking lot can't be taken down?
It goes fiber, Comcast, if they're on it, then Verizon, then pole comes out.
Okay.
But, so we have all poles, 66 to 100 at least, I think, entered into our internal system. And we're working our way through that. I send you guys a packet on that, and I can resend it.
All right, sounds good. All right, thank you.
So I did go out with them too. I took a leniency when I head from Middle Road to Mendel Road, and I, they talked about all the poles that are being chopped. So EverSource, once they move their wires up onto the new poles, they chop the pole. That's a clear indication that it's not ever so, in EverSource's hands anymore. It's in, if we have fiber, Verizon, and then the cable companies. So we need to get those contacts from those companies to talk to those folks about getting the job done now, because those poles have been cut for a while.
Got it. Okay.
And I did notice the pole that you're talking about in Rochelle's parking lot, so...
Yep. It'll be good to get that out of there.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, good stuff. All right.
Thanks, Anthony.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Under standard, standard business, just to recap from last week, we had talked about putting together a screen to look at town administrator resumes and town accounting, I can report back on my end. Spoke with Ryan Rizendis, Jesse St. Jelaise, who are both, Ryan's got a lot of sight lines into this. He was on the Conservation Commission, he's on the Master Plan Committee, as is Mr. St. Jelaise. Dr. Bouchet is willing to serve. And I'll head up that effort along with Mr. Kelly. So Sydney, if you could make packets of those resumes for each one of them, and then I'll work with you getting organized, and we'll pull something together. So just wanted to give the board an update there.
Yeah, and I believe Mr. Ellis is on board with screening town accountants.
Oh, good.
So I just have to contact Silbo Gatto.
Right.
Get that ball rolling too.
Good. Thank you. All right, next item under, we've got a couple people who are interested in serving on the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee. Joy Lad from Leonard Street, has a great background. Is there a motion?
Motion to appoint Joy Lad to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next one is same thing. Mr. Richard Mercier from Boylston Street. Is there a motion to appoint?
Motion to appoint Richard Mercier to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so we've got Serphead. As you know, Serphead is a really important agency. Mr. Kelly has served as the Selectmen's representative. Obviously, so that appointment is expiring, and obviously with Mr. Kelly's pending retirement. I've done this in the past. I'm more than happy to, to serve the board for the next year, or however long the appointment is. I'd be happy to do that if you guys want me to.
Well, okay.
I'm fine.
All right.
Is these both for the GTPG?
Yeah, the next one is, the next one would be, we'll take up that one next. These are two separate.
Okay.
Two separate things.
Motion to appoint Chairman Wonau to Serphead.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next one is for the Serphead GTPG. It's more the planning and roadwork stuff. And Victoria Alfaro, Town Planner, offered to serve on that. And is there a motion to appoint Silbo?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Great, good stuff. Next item, Victoria has identified a couple grant opportunities for us. And as we've put, you know, sort of an informal policy that any grant, you know, any grants that we pursue, we'd like to know about it ahead of time, just to determine if there's any town matching funds or what have you. The first one is, it's called a building condition study for potential reuse of the Russell Memorial Library. Objective, conduct a comprehensive assessment of the vacant Russell Memorial Library to evaluate its suitability for potential reuse, including conversion to housing. The justification is the library was vacant in 2015. On November 6th, 2023, a special town meeting, the voters authorized the sale of the Russell Memorial Library. The grant-funded building condition study may make the purchase of the property more appealing to a developer. The estimated cost is $50,000. That's what, that's the grant opportunity, not a cost to the town. I've checked with Victoria and asked if there was any matching funds there. That does not appear to be the case. So we can, I just wanted to describe those, and then I'll get into the next one. The next one is, I think, a really unique opportunity for us. It's design of sewer expansion on South Main Street to develop design plans for the expansion of the sewer infrastructure along South Main Street to support future development, improve public health and environment standards. South Main Street is currently at the pre-25% design phase for the reconstruction of the roadway, which is to be put on the Transportation Improvement Program. The tip, the town has identified sewer expansion on South Main Street. It needs area one of the 2020 Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. Implementing sewer infrastructure prior to the roadway construction is optimal. Though the project is not yet scheduled on the tip, the estimated cost is to be determined. Both the Mass Works and the Real Estate Service Technical Assistance Programs, matching funds are not required. Matching funds are not required. The deadline for submissions through the one-stop is June 4th, and the awards expected to be announced in the fall. The deadlines for the project completion, one to two. So I don't know, gentlemen, how you feel about this, but there's not appear to be any risk for the town to go after these. Up to you.
I don't, I don't know about the library one, just for the simple fact that we did put an article to sell the library. I don't know if it's in the town's best interest to explore grant opportunities and just put that property up and take the cash and stash it somewhere. And we've already, we've done something, as you know, Mr. Wonau, back in the day, with, I think it was with Mr. Katina was here and the town administrator at the time from out of Poise, was trying to do something with Veterans Housing, and it just got so super stretched in cost, we just kinda let it ride. So I know a lot of people are looking for us to kinda get rid of that property, instead of letting it fall apart further and further and further. I don't know where we've been, if the town administrator's done anything for appraisals on it, to figure it out and just dispose of the property. I do know that it would be a huge uphill battle because of the way the building is structured, especially with ADU compliance and things of the like. ADA compliant, I'm sorry. You know, what kind of expenses that would be and who would burden those costs. But I know it's not something the town could ever fund as a project.
Right.
For housing purposes. And again, it was something that was mentioned, maybe two or three units in it. My opinion is sell it, let somebody else invest the money into the property. But if somebody else has got a better idea, then...
And I think that's what this grant opportunity would do. Provide us with some technical assistance, help us market it, and so on and so forth. If we're not on the last grant, we had to put some matching funds against it. I personally don't see any downside in pursuing this and see if we can get some help to figure out how best to do it. I don't see there's any harm in doing that. I mean, I was just with some members of the Fairhaven Housing Authority, and they're building 30 units in Fairhaven, working with the state. They have basically the same charter as our housing authority. So maybe with some technical assistance, we might be able to figure out how to get this thing moving and make it attractive. Maybe it's with the housing authority, or maybe it's with somebody private. I see in New Bedford, they're, you know, they're doing stuff with vacant schools, the former Armory building. I think a lot of that goes in, you gotta let developers or somebody know, like, here's what you're dealing with here, you know? So...
Mr. Chairman, this actually came across the plate about a month ago from Victoria to me, when I was still chairman. And I asked her for some information. The one-stop grant, I'm sorry for pulling out the phone, but I wanted to read the email just to clarify some things. The program can fund building condition and feasibility studies among other pre-development activities, as long as the end use of the building is not for municipal purposes. So this would actually enable us to hopefully, I wanna clarify, and I'd like to ask her questions, because if it came to actually do some kind of a feasibility study on the condition of the actual building to give us an idea, so we can better present it to potential buyers.
Right.
The whole thing is, is it can't remain a town building afterwards with this grant. So it actually would benefit us, I think, to, if we can get some more clarification, to offload it quicker.
Yeah.
And provide maybe a realty...
I didn't realize that that was part of the memo.
Yeah, well, it just, it just clicked in my brain. I was like, I think I read something about the one-stop grant.
Yeah, I mean, if that's, if that's, I mean, I think the chairman kinda alluded to that, right? But if the end use is not gonna be something that we're gonna do, and it's just gonna help us better, like you say, market it.
Yeah.
And understand what we have.
Good.
For sale purposes.
Yeah.
All right.
I don't know if Mr. Hinkley needs more time to talk to Victoria on the grant.
I think I would just say... I can figure that out personally. I'm okay with it right now. And I can just follow up with her afterwards, if that's all right with you, gentlemen?
Yeah, and the sewer one, Mr. Chairman, I know that the state is planning on doing South Main Street over again, but I don't know, it's kinda like design features, whatever it may be for sewer. I would just ask Victoria to get together with Mr. Manado and Ms. Silver, just walk through the door and have a conversation with him before applying for the grant. Make sure it ain't something that we already have in place, is some, some design phase for sewer intentions. I don't know what Woodward and Curran's done in the past in the CWMP, how in-depth that got, or just looked at it. So I would just refer to Mr. Manado and Ms. Silver to talk to Victoria about this grant opportunity, and if, if they think it's worthwhile, I think it's worthwhile. It's something that if we can get some look at design phase from where our current sewer system stops, which I think Pango Street, over by Charmed Auto.
Pembroke.
Pembroke, whatever the name is. I know they changed names across the street and on the side of the road, or whatever it is. If that's the case, and they can come in and do some small portion of designing to get us down to the Fairhaven line, more power to us.
And I, so this weekend, I saw Charlie Murphy, the baseball parade, who's the chairman of the Board of Selectmen in Fairhaven. And I saw Vice Chair, Selectman Romano, I think his name is. And we had talked about, like, getting a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen, the two boards together, just to talk about issues, you know? And so this could be one of them, because they have capacity potentially in Fairhaven. And I don't know if there's a way to tap into their infrastructure. But, you know, I think Dan, you talked, you and Kathy talking with Victoria about this grant opportunity, but if there's a way we can do something and work with the town of Fairhaven, that might be an opportunity for us.
That's one of the things I wanted to discuss.
Okay, good. All right, so look, I guess the bottom line is, if we're good with letting, telling Victoria to go forward with these and just keep us up to date during the process, then I think that's, that's what we're looking for here. She just doesn't wanna get ahead of us, and...
I just want Victoria to check with Kathy, there's no conflict between what this, what this design phase would be with sewer versus what was done in the CWMP. And if there's no, if there's not redundancies, then let's go for it.
All right, so a motion to green light Victoria to pursue these two grant opportunities in coordination with DPW.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, next item, state...
My agenda's ended. No, I got a continuation on that, I'm sorry.
Are you sure?
I was gonna say, meeting over. You wouldn't be so lucky, Mr. Kelly.
All right, there's, bottom line is, Mr. McGlynn, who's on the Finance Committee, his wife is, just got elected to the School Committee. Congratulations, Deputy, for that. So he just wanted to make sure if there was any conflict of interest. And the bottom line is, doesn't appear to be the case. And so it was nice of him, I appreciate him sharing this with us. He knows what he has to do, so good for, good for him on that. So is there a motion to place on file?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Next item is the delegation agreement for the RFP for the Assessment Center. Mr. Kelly, I mean, you can walk us through this, please?
The, we've gone back and forth a couple times with civil service on these delegation letters from when you folks saw it originally. And the major concern, this latest concern, was they were looking to put a name in. And they started out with Mr. Hinkley, then they went to me. And since I'm not gonna be here through the process, and Mr. Hinkley was no longer the chair, we convinced them that it would be viable for these letters to survive through the process, that where it had to have a particular representative of the town, it'd say the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, or they're designated.
Fine, I'll just do it. Happy to do it. Mr. Chairman, if we could pump the brakes for a second. I haven't read through any of these delegations. They're coming fast and furious with revisions and everything else. This has been something that's been kicked, this can's been kicked for eight months. I know we like to get it going, but I would just ask for a two-week hold period, so I can get through budgets and everything else with Mr. Kelly in preparation of town meeting, and I can read this and get through all of this stuff. Secondly, I would ask Mr. Kelly that the town council hasn't, at least we've viewed it.
Twice.
Okay. I know he had some concerns on the last revision, so two weeks ain't gonna hurt after kicking cans for eight months. And it's not fault of ours, but civil service is a shared thing. Civil service has really stalled us out. Again, I just need more time. Time is...
But just to be clear, the real issue is who's gonna sign the thing, right? So that's the big issue, just so you guys know.
It was a little language stuff, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to read through.
As you're reading it, I'll sign it as the chair. Didn't matter to me. So once we get to that point, I just wanna make sure that that's not an issue.
And also in the...
Okay.
It's definitely not an issue.
Also in the packet is the RFP with revisions from Darren. And I'd ask if the board look at it. And so if you approve the delegation letter, then you can attach the delegation letter and, to the RFP, and you're one step closer.
Is that all the redline stuff I see? That's Mr. Klein?
And mine, both.
Okay.
All right, so I'm ready to rip anyway.
Okay. Item number nine, item number nine, which is Civic Plus Town Website Migration Options. It looks like IT has checked the options for other website, but Civic Plus was the most affordable option for the fiscal year. It's an annual contract, so you would be looking to just, Mr. Chairman, yeah?
Jamie, is this just the additional $3500 to $3700 to upgrade the Civic Plus with the other options that we were looking for from the original yearly expenditure? This is like the $3500 to $3700?
Yeah, that's what I understand.
This is the one, right? The, just that little additional spending for, for different modules or something?
When Nick went into it, some of it was beyond my technology understanding, but...
No, I know, but there was like additional, I forget exactly what the additional modules were or whatever for us to get.
And it's the most affordable, and it's, I'm not sure it answers all our problems, but most of them.
So the bottom line, it's to stay with the existing vendor Civic Plus.
Yep.
With the small additional cost of $3500 or $3700 for the upgrade.
It's getting to be like most of the software, technology thing, issues. A number, where there were a number of companies available before for websites, they're all buying each other up and becoming...
Yeah.
Now I think it's...
So they could check your higher fees. That's all, that's all about.
Monopoly.
Higher fees. And we gotta be careful watching, looking at some of these budgets that I've seen with software. I mean, some of this stuff's down, it costs dumb money.
And it's also the problem is...
And the increases of being...
They're being bought out, and they're ending up being one company doing that particular...
What did we do before we had it? We survived. Some of the costs are really getting crazy, is what I'm saying, right? So, I mean, if you don't watch out for this, you could be spending half a million dollars a year just on technology that we don't have. Right?
I know that if you wanna...
Maybe we could get some agents.
If you wanna convert to, if you, if you're not using MUNIS now, and you wanna convert to it, they're quoting prices for small towns of $750,000 and $900,000.
It's criminal.
I don't know what to say anymore. Just, just stop implementing more and more things that can, that consist of technology and software agreements that you have that increase in the thousands every year. Or you're gonna be screwed, right? There's only so much of this stuff that you really need. Other things are just add-ons and yay, look at how nice this is.
All right. Civic Plus?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Mr. Kelly, next item is the Hero Act. Is this an extent, this is a continuation of the last conversation we had?
Right, and quite a few materials from the Veterans Service Office for you to consider.
I'm assuming you haven't added...
Which, which option? It was the one that Mr. Fish was talking about, the cheaper option.
Yeah.
And we said we're all aboard with the cheaper option. I forget which option that is, but...
Yeah, I think we, I thought we resolved this last go-around, but...
He added more information for you folks, did.
All right, let's just take a look at it.
Motion from Mr. Fish to make sure we get this right. I know we have a proposed article, Mr. Chairman, for, you know, like a work program for veterans as well. So we have to get with Mr. Fish and say, what is, what's the exemption that we're voting, right? The cheap option that we talked about?
Yeah, 'cause there's a drastic difference.
Yeah.
It was the cheap option.
There's the cheaper of the option.
Whatever it was.
Something like 3%, versus...
Why don't we do this? We're meeting Friday. Maybe we can bring Brad in real quick, just to give us a quick refresher on it?
Well, then, there's an article for it too, so he can come in and just give us this, and we'll put that one thing back on the agenda, right?
Sydney, if we can stick this on the agenda for Friday when we meet, that'd be great. Good stuff. All right, next item is, I know we sort of frowned on this stuff, but we did approve last week, and we've got a few folks who would like to carry over some renewed vacation time. If you wanna review this, we are meeting Friday, we can make a determination, but I think what's before us is pretty reasonable. But again, you know, leave it up to you, it's not a lot. It's just, you know, we do want people to use their time, 'cause I think that's really important, but, you know, we also understand that people sometimes aren't able to do that. So if you wanna hold off on making a determination, and you can take it up on Friday?
Sure.
Okay? Okay?
Sounds good to me. Ten and eleven.
All right. So we'll do that, Sidney, as well. We'll just do a final, final on these, give everybody an opportunity to review this one last time. All right. Next item under number twelve, I put in Board of Selectment Operations. It's really just more to, you know, as a continuation of the last conversation that we had about, you know, department heads and having them come in to talk to the board, but also wanted to propose to you, gentlemen, like this Friday, we have a meeting scheduled to do a lot of cleanup with the budget and other, you know, things that impact our employees and so on and so forth. So, I know, I know everybody's busy, but we meet Tuesdays, we meet two Tuesdays a month, and I would like to propose that we pick a Friday, either in between those dates or at the end of the month. Reserve a Friday at a date certain, whether it's eleven AM or ten AM or noon or whatever, for us to have a selectmen's meeting. This way we can bring in our department heads. I hate seeing, I like seeing Dan and Kathy here, but I hate seeing them here after hours, right? So if we can utilize that time and the staff that we have onboard to deal with issues like, you know, this vacation buyback stuff or some of these other things that come up that we're not able to resolve on a Tuesday night meeting, I don't know how you gentlemen feel about that, but I'm down for that, you know, for as long as we have to, until we don't have to. So, talking about that. And then also, you know, I don't want this to come out the wrong way, but, you know, sometimes we get, whether it's grievances or complaints from members of the union, I wanna make myself available. And, you know, if we can resolve something at a meeting before the board rather than it going to a letter, you know, a letter getting sent, and I was just looking at the contracts today, it's seven days, fourteen days, twenty-one days, all this stuff that goes on and on, that we might be able to just resolve just by having a presentation and a conversation, then I'm up for that as well. So I just feel like there's some things that we can do just to maybe smooth out some of the things that are going on, and hopefully try to get it running. It's been, I feel, running well, but maybe just enhance it a little bit, so I don't want anybody to feel like I'm dissing how we've done things in the past, but proposing a Friday meeting.
Here and there, I don't know, probably Friday afternoons.
Yeah, as long as it's not every week, just because my schedule won't allow it, but I, you know, this Friday, for instance, Tony texted me and said, hey, is this cool? And I said, as long as it's at this time, I'm okay with it.
I have a little bit more flexibility these days on Fridays, and I know, I don't wanna speak for you, so Bob, would it be better, like if we picked one, like the last Friday of the month, or the one sandwiched in between, maybe the one in between the two Tuesdays? Because if you do something on the first meeting, you can't resolve it, then you can bang it out the next day?
I think that would work. That's all right with you guys.
Yes, sure.
That would work for me, and then I could...
As long as his schedule accommodates it.
Is there a time better for you? As long as we settle on it?
If we pick a day, I can put it on my calendar. That'll prevent me from being, you know, knowing Massachusetts at eleven AM.
Friday at one fifteen works, good for me, thanks for asking.
Does that, does that work?
It does work for me. I mean, I know we're doing, I think this week is one thirty.
One thirty.
Because I got, at first I thought it was eleven, so I'm like, eh, that'll work. But then I seen a text, and it was like, hey, one thirty, and I'm like, that works even better for me.
Let's check it out. I mean, it is the summertime, you know, so like, eh...
No, we're just seeing what comes up for business, right? If things pop up in between, like I was saying, and we can do something like that, as long as, I think Mr. Hinckley, you know, over the last year when he was chairman, he, and even when I was chairman, so I've been on, he was, he was pretty good at accommodating meetings, because we gave him a heads up, right? It ain't the day before or two days before, if you'd say, hey, maybe this Friday, we'll do this. And he can schedule his, his prep around for his schedule.
All right, good stuff. Thank you.
It's all up to Mr. Hinckley, yeah? One fifteen works for me.
All right, good stuff. All right, next item, DPW. I used to gas feed, working with Dan and Kathy on some things, but before you, before you grab the podium, Dan, I wanna just call out Kathy. We had some issues at Lake Street the other day with signage, and what was the other one?
Lights, the lights.
Oh, the dock, the dock was broken.
The dock, yeah, the dock network.
And, you know, I sent an email, Kathy got right back to me, issue was resolved, and I appreciate that, so thank you for that. And that was brought to my attention by the Ambassador of Lake Street, Scott Daggett. And so I think, you know, when Scott calls, we gotta make sure that we take care of business. So I do wanna just publicly recognize that, that customer service, so thank you for that, Kathy. With that said, Dan, if you wanna grab, grab Mike?
I got some proposals, I guess.
We apologize, this is the last one, we just spent a little crazy.
Sure.
So we got it all together.
Thank you. And also, what I understand, last week, Dan, you got an award?
Yep.
Right? So, you don't like to brag on that, but maybe you want to just tell us about that?
Um, it's actually, um, environmental protection from DEP. It's for three consecutive years with like perfect housekeeping, I guess, with the water. It's all the testing, no hits, no, all the paperwork, actually, which is Kathy's, you know, all our reports, and everything's been in line for the last three years. And actually, we were one of fifteen towns out of three-hundred-and-fifty-one that got that award.
Wow, pretty good, Dan.
So it's three consecutive years.
And I know, you're the head of the department, but there's a lot of people that go in to make it happen.
John, John Westgate, he does all the testing, Kath is doing all the paperwork in the office, so it's, it's a team effort, you know, with everybody over there, and it's, it was kinda nice to hear, it was only fifteen towns out of three-hundred-and-fifty-one that got that award, so...
Sometimes when a cushion gets stuff, you say it's alphabetical, so we're up in the top.
Yeah, we are.
In this case, it wasn't.
In that category, we did get up there.
Well, congratulations, good for you guys. I think anytime we can get recognized for the work we do, that's good, it's good stuff for us, I'm glad to be able to highlight that tonight.
Thank you.
So, first thing on the agenda is to talk about Chapter Ninety and road paving projects. I think what we're looking for is, you know, a comprehensive report on what we have for money, where you wanna go with it, what we're looking to do.
So, are you guys, did you get, I don't know if you wanna look at that quick, like, so that's what we have as of now. So the total, right now we have one million, two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and fifty-four cents. So that's the balance as of, well, as of July, because that's, the five-hundred-and-ten's gonna be in July for us. So, right now we get seven forty-seven, five-hundred-and-ten is what we're gonna get as of July, because this, as of, we used to get three-hundred-and-fourteen thousand every year, which now, for the next five years, we're getting additional two-hundred thousand, so we'll be getting five-hundred thousand for the next five years. So, so that was new, plus we get that additional seventy-four thousand this year. So, so this is what I proposed, that's why I'm looking for, I kinda to see if we can get a sweeper, because the way I looked at it, one of the roads I wanted to do is Mendel Road, because that, when the drainage is done, we done last year, and that road's pretty bad, so I was thinking of trying to get that one done this year, reclaimed and paved. Even back then, when they, they did this road, it was just an overlay, so it wasn't done, you know what I mean? It was just a quick, they just went over it, which is not a good base. The way, the right way to do it is reclaim it and then, you know, put a binder and top coat on it. So, and that cost would be five-hundred thousand for, for that road alone. So, the other thing, yeah, I was looking for this year, because of this additional funding, was to try to purchase a sweeper, because, again, this would be not in taxation. And, you know, my opinion is kind of a vital piece to have. We use that a lot even on our own construction jobs. Even if there's an accident, you know, we gotta put down sand, sweep it up, and, you know, to hire it out, it's kinda, you gotta count on somebody to do that, and that's, that's difficult, you know? So that's, that's my opinion, but I mean, I know the funding, it is what it is.
What's the lifespan of a sweeper?
Probably at least twenty, ours is probably twenty years old now.
Take care of it, right?
Yeah, ours is twenty years old, and the problem with the, how much it changed over the twenty years, that sweeper is all mechanical, so it's all chain, chains and sprockets and everything. All the newer equipment is hoses with hydraulic motors, you know, for pumps, runs of sweepers, runs everything. You still got the maintenance with the brooms and stuff like that, but as far as like a ton of maintenance is, the old ones are, like I said, all mechanical, and the new ones are all hydraulic. So you blow a hose, it's a lot less expensive to repair. Again, that's my thoughts, I don't know what the board's thoughts are on this, but I mean, so that was my two proposal for this year. I kinda wanted to hold off on Hamlin Street. I know they did the bridge and everything, but I got some more drainage I wanna try to get done, and it's been too wet to get out there, so I'm gonna try to get in there in July and get that done, but I'd rather let that settle over the winter, I mean, all the summer and the winter, and then maybe try to tackle that next season. So I mean, if you look down on that paper, and that was my next, so with additional money from next year, we should have enough funding to do Hamlin the following year, so. So that's, that's my thoughts, I don't know if the board's got different ones, but that's...
Yeah, we can go back and forth and talk about a sweeper and all that stuff, I don't know my, my initial reaction is, I don't know if we need to take it out of Chapter Ninety funds, because I hate to take from that and not use that for roads. Maybe that's something that's a free cash item or something like that, or, you know, some, something outside of the stuff that's gonna fix the roads, that's just my initial thought, but I wanna hear from the board, too, would you guys feel, how you feel about this, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, of course. So, you know, and my initial thought is no, not spending two-hundred-and-seventy-five or three-hundred thousand dollars for a street sweeper out of Chapter Ninety funds. However, when we get to the articles, I think there's ways to squeeze some money from the proposed money being spent from free cash, to squeeze some of those down, and I think we can do some pretty good squeezing. And maybe we could get fifty percent of the street sweeper from article money, and then fifty percent, so if we could take, just call it three-hundred thousand dollars, if we could take hundred-and-fifty from squeezing some free cash, article money, and then we do, you know, the other hundred-and-twenty-five. Be sure it's two-seventy-five?
Correct, yep.
Brand new.
Yep. I just have to check, it was, it was a little cheaper.
Is it, is it, is it a good street sweeper, one that dumps by itself, and you don't have to bring a machine, and somebody crashes the...
Correct, this was actually a driving one, so you can drive from either side, and you can, it's got a thing, so you can dump into a dump truck. So it can either dump into a dump truck, or you can just drive down the road, this thing will do fifty miles an hour, so you don't have to go, because that, our sweeper right now, too, is so slow, and it takes forever, so you gotta put a truck with it so we can dump into. Where this thing, you go sweep, drive to the barn, dump, I don't even have to send anybody with them, you know? So that's, that's a huge plus, you know?
Is it, is it, Dan?
Oh yeah, that's it, right there, you guys wanna just take a quick look at it, that's...
That would be nice.
Yeah, sorry.
Right, a picture tells everybody a lot, right?
Yeah, and if you open it up, it'll show you the dumping stuff in there as well, but...
So again, going back to the funding, Mr. Chairman?
And, you know, the other good thing, which I, I know you're gonna be happy with this, it's low enough to get in our barn, so I can put that inside, it don't have to stay outside.
Yeah, this is a little different than the yellow one. That looks like a boat mobile.
The yellow one that spits the rocks in the road, off the side of the road, doesn't really pick it up?
This is huge, and again, it's, it can stay in the front barn, and, because we only got ten-foot doors in the front garage.
Does leaves too, right?
Yep, so...
Yeah, this sucks.
Yeah.
This ain't, this ain't a vacuum.
No, no, that's a...
It's just a brush, there's no vacuum to it, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so, I mean, if we can get creative squishing down articles, which I think we can, we may be able to take, you know, appropriate, you know, whatever is a buck and a quarter from article money, and then maybe fund the other one-fifty from Chapter Ninety and skin it that way, but take the full amount from Chapter Ninety, I'm like, yeah.
Yeah, well, I figured this year was the first year we actually got that additional two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, so it was kinda, we weren't counting on this money, it was actually a good thing that we got it, so that's why I figured, well, we didn't know about it before, we might as well take advantage of it, but, again, you know as well as I, we got some roads to fix as well, yeah.
Well, we gotta, we gotta try to be creative, I think that's what the board's willing to do, right? So, but it's, just because you get additional funding, and it's always additional funding only for a certain amount of time, and it's allocated for a specific reason, and we go out and do something different with it, right? It's kinda, I've talked about this year over year, about our excise tax collections, right? It was, the original intent was roads and bridges, and here we are balancing the general fund with one-point-five million, which pretty much is all of it.
Yep.
Right? So it's just the way government operates, and I kinda don't wanna be any part of that. I mean, we get money to do a specific thing, take a look at our roads, they're falling apart, right? We need as much money as we can to continue doing what we should be doing, which is paving roads, right? There's people, roads that are horrible. And I was gonna have a conversation, which we were gonna saw on the agenda, about what you have left over in the remainder of your budget, which isn't a lot of money in road paving, to take care of a side street, but it's a reclaim job.
Yep.
Because that's another crap, Chipseal Road, the road's blowing apart now, and people are calling me and seeing me in places and going, hey, while you're here, can I talk to you about my road?
Well, this is one, while we're talking about this year, it wasn't just them, I wanted, well, because we brought up For Haven and stuff, so one of them was Tootle Lane, and if, maybe we could, like, get this involved as well, and if I, because this one I wanna reclaim. Originally, when we proposed this, I was gonna dig it out and process and all that, and this might, in our best interest, maybe to reclaim it instead, which would cost us the same kind of money, and...
Where's that, I'll see that.
Well, I just...
You're just talking about Tootle?
Well, we, we talked about this in the past, and...
Yeah, no, I know, I know that, it's just not here.
Okay, oh yeah, sorry. And we did have the intermunicipal agreement they wanted us to sign, so that's the other thing I kinda wanted to go over as well, so, I know Mr. Wonar was thinking on the, on the, on the thing, but this intermunicipal agreement, I don't know, again, I can get you guys all copies, this is something I have, and I think I gave it to you a while ago, but it just kinda was dead in the water for now, so I kinda wanna...
Yeah, when we meet with those guys, like, all this different stuff, let's...
Dan, when you, when you, just talk Tootle Lane for a minute, right? So you got processed twelve bucks?
Yes.
Nine hundred yards.
Yeah, correct.
You're gonna reclaim Mendel Road? Why can't you use the pro, what extra process you have there?
The stuff I got in the yard, we already crush, so that's part of that money I spend for crushing every year, doing the concrete and the asphalt and all stuff, our stuff, I already have that material at the yard.
So you don't need a ten-eighth for that?
No, no, nope, I don't need that, so, so that's one of the things.
And that would be in house.
So, and the other thing I put in for the labor cost, which originally I was gonna go in there, excavate it, kept digging out, and then put our process in and grade it to kinda save on the reclaiming, but technically, it's probably cheaper, it's gonna be cheaper for the, us to get, just have the reclaiming. It's two-seventy-five a square yard, and I refigured it out, it was like fourteen grand for them guys to come in there, they're gonna reclaim it, road grade it, and then we could pave it. It's a better job to be great with a skid steer than a road grader. We did Anthony Street, and that's what it did, and it came out perfect, you know what I mean? Definitely, to do with a road grader is the better option in us, a small street, one thing, but if you go a longer street, you're better off with a road grader, and, you know, they got big rollers and all that stuff helps to, to come out a better job.
So we're just gonna hold off now on Tootle Lane, do not do any approving on that? I think, I think it, it does make sense. Mendel Road's a disaster, we gotta put that out the bid.
Okay, but Tootle, don't forget, For Haven is gonna be footing a bill on this one. That's no money from us.
I'm not saying we're not gonna do it. I'm just, I don't have the details, you're shining in front of the board's face right now, an intermunicipal agreement for the first time.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it wasn't the first time I had it.
I haven't seen it.
With Mr. Kelly for, a long time.
It was a while ago, the, the board, it was part of his package to...
A long time ago, so actually I gave it to you a while ago.
I know, I remember us talking, I remember us talking about it, but I thought we were sending you off to For Haven to get something in writing?
Well, that's when I got the paperwork, when I sent it over.
Oh, okay, that's fine, so we just have to review it?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm just revisiting, Deb, it's not...
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine.
And I think that might help even with Mr. Wonar's thing, if we get the agreement with them guys, and we can work together.
So, that, that intermunicipal agreement's just for the paving job on Tootle, right?
No, it's actually, I don't, I think it's more than that, I mean, again, I'll give you my copy, so...
I can get a copy for you, Dan, the problem, let me talk, can I, Mr. Chairman, can I talk about the sewer thing? So, we, we also did this several years back, probably two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, with the town of For Haven, it was under Alan Catino, right? with the town of Faven, it was under Alan Catino, right? We had a gentleman that was proposing some building over here on a vacant lot. That's turned into a junkyard.
Yep, I remember that.
And the reason why we never did that and it got killed was because when Mr. Catino went over and spoke with Faven, their rates were much higher than the city of New Befford's rates, so.
Correct.
And then Mr. Catino in that conversation, we talked about that. It was like, then I gotta set up two different software to run two different, you know, different sections of the town with different rates and generate bills. And it was just kinda like this big to-do thing. Now, I don't know if it's really that complicated and if that was a hundred percent.
Yep.
I, I don't know, it's a decade ago, we'll call it, right?
Yep.
But I do know about the rates. So we have to be very careful because ultimately it's the people that decide if they want to sewer there. And we gotta figure out what those rates are. Even with the rates that were tagged, we're pegged with the city of New Befford because of some old grant from nineteen seventy. Um, what else? They couldn't have got that grant for the sewer thing, so we're pegged with their rate. Which we get a decent rate, it's our fixed cost that boosts our sewer, sewer rate for a cushioned residence, right? It's a fixed cost.
Yep.
Right? So that rate, whatever that rate is in Faven, difference from there, that could be a big deterrent for those people to say, I'm all set.
Yep.
Right? So, I mean, I wouldn't wanna run to the races. I think it's worth having another conversation with Faven. But that's a big ask for the people of a cushioned, right? We gotta figure that out.
Yep.
And now we'd just be sewer, wouldn't be water, it's just sewer because you can't stop intangling water is system from New Befford.
Again, it should be a discussion before South Main Street if they are doing it, you know? Because laying that soup.
That's why we're doing the grant thing.
Yeah, it's definitely.
That South Main Street is gonna be like, probably ten years.
Yeah, no, no, but either way, it should be in the, in that thing and trying to get that water. Because now we're gonna have brand-new pipe right up to South Main and it's stubbing on each side of Slocum. You know what I mean? So it's kinda, to tie into that is huge. And again, that's all hundred-year better pipe and.
At least.
Kinda, you know what I mean?
Slocum Street's a hundred and twenty-year-old pipe. What do we think South Main Street is? The oldest area of the town with Slocum, right? So it's gotta be pretty close to matching it. And we have that list of age and pipe, right?
Correct.
The problem is the water, that wa, that water pipe all the way down South Main Street's multi-millions of dollars, right?
Correct.
So again, it's something that we need to start thinking about and planning for and looking at and say, we're out of funding.
And if, well, again, if that's coming, something with the state, maybe they would be taking care of that or something like that. And then doing the side streets later, again, it's just like we're doing there. You put the gates on the edge and then that can actually be done something in-house in the future too, if you had a.
The board discussed when, when Mr. Wonah was talking to Mass D O G, I don't know, call it a year or two ago. And we said that there's one way that we would be take over that road. Definitely is lay a new water main and a dummy sewer pipe down the road while you open up the road. And I believe Mr. Wonah, he came back and said, there's, there's nothing that they, they're not responsible for anything under the road.
They, they wouldn't be opposed if it was in coordination with, right? You know?
Yep.
That said, could we try to chase other grants or whatever, like from different things, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's the right time to do it, don't get me wrong.
Well, before, you don't want, you don't want to pay that road without doing that, you know what I mean?
No, that's why, that's why we spurred that conversation back then. And I was smart enough to know that we need to replace infrastructure if that road's gonna get redone. Let's talk to the state, right?
Yep.
And figure that out because that's absolutely the time to do it.
Yep, okay.
I mean, it's something that we can talk to them all about, but, you know, you gotta check into. I wouldn't go too deep with an intermunicipal agreement with Faven until you stop talking rates and finding out what that difference is.
Yep.
All right, uh, any other, Mr. Hinckley, any questions?
Oh, I think that's before us.
Can, I would make, I would make so that Mr. Minat can get working on, um, the bid specs um, for, so we, Mendel, no, for Mendel, Mendel Road.
Okay, yeah, well, uh, that's the other thing too. I, I do, did I, did I give the numbers on that? Or was that on the, kinda luckily? But the other thing is, well, since we're talking to bid specs, um, we do have the option to renew Fatucket Hot Mix's contract, so up to two more years. So, so that's keeping the same money as last year, so I got that with me too as well.
What's that mean?
The contract, so we can renew that. We don't have to go back out to bid if he keeps the number the same, so.
I would go out to bid.
Huh?
I'd go out to bid.
Okay.
Hundred percent.
Usually prices don't go down, is what I'm getting, usually they go higher, but that's.
Yeah, well, so I had different conversations with different people, so.
Yep.
And there was a reason why the last bid came in higher.
Okay.
And that could change.
Okay.
So I wouldn't wanna rule anything out and just go without.
No, I'm just bringing it up because we did, we could renew that contract if we, if we choose, so. Okay.
But I would make, you, you wanna make, I think we need to make a motion to approve Mendel Road.
I agree.
And go out to bid though.
Okay, no, I don't worry.
It ain't gonna hurt going out to bid.
Nope, not at all.
Right?
Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, there's a, there's a favor? Hi, for Mendel Road only.
Dan, while we got you.
Yes.
Keen Road, how we doing over there? Because I, you know, it's been a while.
Um, I gotta get back over there. We got, um, that, uh, the patch settled down on Wood Duck. So I got a few complaints on that, I gotta get over there and redo that patch. We wound up doing the other one on Hamlin the other day, yesterday actually.
Okay.
So we got that manhole set and stone, we just gotta get over there and do that.
Okay.
Again, we're kinda, it's been short-staffed, I had guys out with knee surgery and this and that, so we're having a little.
That's the problem right now, is he's, the, the, what he's got left of manpower is trying to burn up the vacation, right?
Burnification, so it is that kind of time of year, but we're going, we're trying, we're sure, but, no, no.
That's Wood Duck settling. It's me putting the board over the trench.
So that's basically, I gotta take care of that one, which I'm gonna try actually to get.
You see this?
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, I see, I seen it, but, yeah, yeah.
I mean, he knows a bunch of them, I know a bunch of them. I get, I get nailed all the time on that road. I'm like, we're gonna go back and fix it, but, you know, it does settle, trenches do settle, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, and even, like you said, even if you compact, that's why I like letting stuff settle over the winter and then just redo them when you're good. You know what I mean? It's, unless you use global fill, you know, it's, I've seen when you can jet it with water, you can, I mean, they got compact as electronic ones and do it, it's, it's definitely a little better than what, where, because again, we don't have the time and the manpower to sit there and compact it all up and lifts. It's, we just don't got the time, it's, you know, we'd never get nothing done if we did that, you know what I mean? It's, that's, turns into a little bigger project, so that's why I let it go and, and we'll repair them. It's usually simpler, even on water breaks, we do them and then we go back and fix them after. I mean, it's kinda what we have to do with the manpower we have, but, yeah.
Anything else, gentlemen?
No, and that subject matter.
All right, next.
Chapter ninety.
Yep, next item is snowplow driver bonuses, Mr. Gasper.
I don't have, I don't think I have any in my book, so anyways, I'll just go off my memory. And do, do you have the, the list of the three? Is that it?
Here.
I have an old list.
Yeah.
So I, I'll just briefly talk, I don't need the names of the three, so.
Yep.
We, we have, what, nineteen to eighteen?
Twenty-one. Twenty-one drivers.
So we had eighteen drivers, we only had two storms.
Correct.
We had eighteen drivers that are eligible for the perfect attendance. There's three of them that plowed the last storm. Um, my recommendation to the board, um, would be to try, and I think the three understand that they're not getting the thousand-dollar bonus. But because there was only two storms and it wasn't like a multitude of storms and they only came in for the last ones. And because we could only, we only got twenty-one contractors to sign on, I think it would go a long way with the other three if we gave them something. And, and, you know, I, I, I've talked to Dan and Kathy about this and I said, okay, so we're not really, we don't have a perfect system designed around the snowplow, plow contractors. But I said to Dan and Kathy when I had a conversation with them, I said, maybe we need to set a hard date for the initial signup, perfect attendance. And I think that date should be somewhere around November fifteenth, because you could get snow after that, right? So if you come in, you sign up by November fifteenth and we get that list, boom, that's the hard list. But then I also think, in certain circumstances, like these other three that come in a little bit later, and we can't do it in, you know, January, February, but I said, if we created the second list where they come in by January first, New Year's, they would be eligible for fifty percent of the bonus, right? So it is that initial hundred percent, a thousand bucks, if you sign up between November fifteenth and January first, we really should be open to that as a board to try to incentivize, because, let's face it. I mean, not everybody knows what they're doing by November fifteenth, but if they don't, at least then, we can say, so you, you have to have perfect attendance, but you only get five hundred bucks. Could you sign after the date of November fifteenth? And, and then just kill it that way, right? And if anybody comes in and signs up after that, there's nothing. But I think if we make a little bit more fairer system for signing up.
The reason I put these guys in, well, one of the guys has probably been with us for ten years. And if you look up his record, the guy hasn't missed a storm since he's been here. Um, that's one of the reasons I put him in. And he told me he was on vacation, he was out of the country that time. But actually, two of the three were vacation, they were on vacation. And the third one was actually just really sick and he couldn't come in. So that's why I put them guys in for it. I mean, again, it's a board's decision, but again, that, the one of them, if you look up his, his, his record, he's been here probably ten years and that guy has not missed one storm. He's, he's awesome, so that's why I did that and that's.
To stay fair to what we did and what the vote was, I think we're being more than fair to give them fifty percent.
I have no problem with that and, you know.
Instead of giving them nothing, I, because that's really technically what it is, perfect attendance, perfect attendance, the way the motion was made. But I would, I would, um, to, to hold these other three, um, snowplow contractors to hopefully have them sign up again with the town. And it was only two storms, fifty percent, give them the five hundred dollar, a five hundred dollar bonus to hopefully bring them back next year and say, hey, that was pretty fair on the town.
And look, we don't have to wait until, you know, October, we should say, like, as soon as they get their bonus. And when they come in to get their bonus, say, hey, you want in for next year, sign them up then, right?
Yeah, I've already been talking to them, I've been calling, asking for the bonuses and I am thanking them.
Right.
For plowing for us and how much we appreciate them and I hope they come back next year.
So the, the problem for Dan, um, and I know, because I've worked pretty closely with Mr. Minat and Miss Silver in DPW, is twenty-one contractors aren't enough, right? We've been, we've been, I say we, I say we, but I'm gonna say, I, I do mean we, because we out of town, right? But I'm gonna say Dan's been extremely fortunate that he hasn't seen a bad winter like we had in two thousand fifteen. Because I can tell you right now, even with the small crew that Dan has for our workers and then twenty, twenty-one contractors, we're losing roads if we have a two thousand fifteen season, right? And that's horrendous for this community. So again, we need to really be twenty-five, thirty contractors.
At that point in fifteen, we had like thirty-four, at, at that point, we had thirty-four contractors.
You know what I mean? So, I mean, we're dealing with a, already a small crew and then we have a small amount of contractors. It doesn't sound like a lot, but those three, to me, I think it would be a good gesture for the town to pay them a five hundred dollar bonus.
No problem with that.
So I'll make a motion to pay the three that don't have perfect attendance a five hundred dollar bonus and pay the rest of them their thousand-dollar bonus.
Second. Hold on, favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sound good, Dan?
Yep.
All right.
All right.
See, next item, FYI.
And Dan, for next year when we do this, let's try to get that system built, right? So there'll be no more. We have a system built with the two signup periods, right? And anybody can sign up after J one, but there's no bonus.
Yep.
Right?
Okay.
But at least we have two windows.
Yep.
Next item, I think we kinda touched on it under overall plan and key projects, but, you know, Dan, there's a lot of stuff that you do, Kathy, that you do above and beyond, you know, like big projects, right? So kinda wanna get a sense from you and Kathy, just to kinda educate the board and the general public, like, sort of the low-hanging fruit that may not be visible, but like, just talk about what you're doing and, you know.
I, I also got another sheet for you guys.
All right, let's go.
Actually, yeah, so, this is kind of what we did this fiscal. So it's basically, I gave, I gave you the road materials, I gave you, um, the R and M equipment and I gave you the, the snow. So, you know, what we've spent the money on and, so that's, Kathy's very good with that, keep track of exactly what we've spent all our money on and.
So.
I know there was an issue, like with buying tires, um, but if you looked at, if you look at my R and M, I buy tires on bolt. Reason, I mean, we've been doing this since I started here, even when Paul Silvey was here. Um, a lot of times we get the rubber in the, in the winter, just because you need good rubber to be out there in the, in the, in the weather. So if the tires need them, we usually get them for the winter, you know what I mean? So your trucks ain't slipping and sliding around out there, so.
So, yeah, let me comment on that ones, because that, the conversation around the tires, I think can be applied for many other things that are being spent from snow and ice removal, that clear the air with everybody that doesn't really understand.
Yep.
What happens, right?
Yep.
So we get an invoice for a set of, just call it one of our one-ton trucks, right? Just call, just call four tires, right? Could be six on, on the dualies, whatever. The maximum amount that if, if we start again audited and we, and they start looking at, which we do get audited, but if they stopped, which they seem to be doing more, more of a scrutinizing expenditures, right? I'm fine with saying, and I can make the case, because I've done it in my own professional life, right? Is I can make the case that six months out of the year, that truck is being used for snow removal, right? So I would say you can buy tires on the snow removal and allocate fifty percent of that expenditure and take it from snow and ice, but you can't take a hundred percent of it.
So what about vice versa? If you look at my R and M equipment, I probably got more trucks, I got tires during the regular year than on snow.
So that's, so, so that's, so that's, that's still, that doesn't matter what time of the year we do it. No, you know, listen, it doesn't matter what time, I'm not saying that you can only go put tires on it in the winter once, Dan. What I'm telling you is, what I'm telling you, what I'm trying to say to you is, if you're gonna do it, you can do it any time of the year, because the truck will be used six months out of the year for snow and ice removal.
Yep.
Doesn't matter when you do it.
Okay.
Charge fifty percent.
That'll probably work, Kev, because.
Right? So you charge fifty percent to snow and ice, fifty percent to your R and M budget, done. It doesn't matter, I mean, and I can make the argument, if somebody says to me, whoa, geez, Mr. Gasper, you put tires on your truck in July, it wasn't really snow and ice. Say, really? I needed tires in July and I use the truck come November, December, January, February, March, April, May. Well, not really May. Hopefully we don't get snow in May, right? So it doesn't really matter when, it's just when the vehicle needs tires. And we can easily justify fifty percent of that cost, right?
Yep. And, you know, even if you look at my R and M, I don't know if you got that in front of you too. I got truck eleven thirteen that we couldn't take out of snow that got sandblasted. But if I didn't use them trucks for snow and I got sanders in them, guess what? They wouldn't be needing sandblasting and, and painting, you know what I mean? So I'm trying to prevent maintenance, because if you look at truck twenty-one, that body would've cost me for a body, you know what I mean? So eleven and thirteen were getting rusty again, because we're throwing the sanders in, in the back of them, you know what I mean?
Just, just, it's always keeping in mind that the truck ain't only used, if the truck was only used for snow and ice removal, then you could do a hundred percent. But any good accounting or auditor will look at it and, and question it, right? I did it with my own, my own vehicle when I bought a plow. I tried to do a hundred percent. And then the question was simply asked from the accounting, my accountant, is, really? Do you only use that plow for your business?
Yeah, yeah.
And I was like, no. And he's like, what percentage are we gonna use?
Yeah.
I was like, I don't know, sixty, forty, seventy-five, twenty-five. He goes, anything better than a hundred percent, right?
Yep.
So, you know, it's one of those deals where I kinda learned from my personal side. And we've been, there's been questions this side of government side. And I said, well, you know what? The reality of it is, I could easily justify fifty percent of anything that goes on that, because it's fifty percent of the time that truck's being used in this, in the winter months, right?
Yep, yep.
So.
Yeah.
You know, we're just gonna try to keep that in mind, right? So we could stop the, the questioning of, you know, you know, what's this and a hundred percent of it? And I'm like, oh, that's not cool, right? You shouldn't be doing that, but we can do it. And he, and, and in the end, it's probably gonna equal to the same.
That's what I'm saying, it's, it's gonna be the same.
But it's just, it's just how we do it.
Yep.
Right? When people start looking at slips and everything else, they're like, yep, okay, so when you do your bill, and you get Roland's four tires, right?
Yep.
Thousand bucks, five hundred snow and ice, five hundred R and M from DPW, and that's on there, they're like, oh, it's legit, feel it, have a nice day. That's all, that's, so we're just trying to clean it up.
Yep.
On how we're doing business.
We can do that, that's easy.
Accounting purposes. And auditing, right? And auditing, right?
You guys, do you have any other questions on that, or what you guys?
No.
I mean, Dan, you can look at it, or?
So before Mr. Manat takes off, and Miss Silva takes off, I think it's important, because we froze the budgets Friday. But, and I think we did C Mass, snow and ice is done, right? There's no more money being spent out of that, that's, that's the other, and whatever we're gonna do for bonuses and our, we're gonna pay that, Dan. That freeze is put on Friday, but we need to discuss that, because this thing's in C Mass and this thing's in your DPW, we can absolutely not freeze.
Correct.
So I would like for you.
Especially C Mass, actually Kathy has a lot.
I would like for you to, while you have this opportunity to speak to the board, speak to us about, we can't just freeze.
Yep.
Because we get bills in from C Mass and trash hauling and recycle and all that stuff that we gonna get bills in. And we gotta freeze, but we need to pay bills. And I don't want problems with vendors and, and contracts that we have out there, and I know we have contracts for hauling and stuff like that. And I don't want to put anybody in a bad position, and I surely don't want you or Kathy to be getting those phone calls saying, why hasn't the bill been paid?
Yep.
Right? So whatever we, I don't know what we can still freeze, if we need to do that, or. Talk about the things, talk about the things, Dan, please, talk about the things that can't be frozen, right?
It's fuel, one, fuels for the whole entire town, that's.
I got it, I, I understand.
As far as the rest of the DPW stuff, I mean, I mean, I'm gonna need grass seed, I'm gonna need, you know what I mean? Because I'm, even if I'm not doing that, I'm still working with detention ponds, I gotta finish them couple up. I'm doing one behind the DPW there reservation or reservoir, or whatever it is down in the back there, we're gonna restart and work on, I'm still working on Cheshire. So again, that's more, like I said, fuel and, and labor, but it's gonna be like grass seed. We already got the loan, and again, we mutual aid, which worked out good for Wayham, we using a screener and you know, screening material we had, so we have loan for these jobs, so that ain't costing us nothing, you know? I think pretty much the seed for now and asphalt for patching roads, we're gonna need still getting, you know, there's always potholes, and I do definitely got some patches and some, and some basins to fix. So it's pretty much a little concrete and, and mix, not, I don't know, not buying a lot of tonnage, but it adds up if you look at that paper, you know what I mean, just even potholes and stuff, you get a ton here, a ton there, a ton there, you know what I mean, a couple tons.
Yeah.
So.
Can we fix the pothole bottom of Nice Lane, now you just mentioned pothole? Nice Lane and Middle Road, right there, right on the corner, everybody.
So again, that's like ongoing, we get, I get lists of stuff to fix.
Well, that's because that, that, what do they call that, they use coal patch?
Yes, and that's, I mean, again.
You put it in the hole and a week later it's gone.
And again, we had a hard time this year, and Rochester was sold out, and then, so they usually open in the winter. So we wound up going to Edwards, which is out of Avon, so that's a little height to get mixed, you know, but. So we were doing it, but, and even them, they, they closed their plant for a certain amount of time to do the work on the plant. So they are good for the spring, so.
We got one.
So now you have to buy the coal patch.
We have a local plant.
Unfortunately, huh? I know, but they're not open in the winter. Asphalt, see, you get asphalt in the winter. I know, it'd be nice if they were, but they haven't been open.
What is that, like, that coal patch stuff, that's like a special process that they do?
It's like, yeah, it's cold and it's, it's a mix.
I know, it's garbage.
Oil and stuff in it, but it does, it just falls out, but it's snow, it doesn't stay in there.
So you put it in there in the winter, just so people aren't blowing out their tires, because it's dark, they're driving, they don't see it.
It's a temporary patch.
Correct, yeah, it's like you can't.
I mean, so, I mean, I know we're talking about these other roads with Dan, but if you drive down, so he did a stretch of road, like somewhere around Nice Lane, maybe, I don't know, Dan, what do you think? Eight hundred feet down?
Yeah, something like that.
From the library down, eight hundred feet or something like that?
Yeah, we piecework that.
You can, you can see the line, that's where the duplexes are, right? And then it stops, and there's an old water main that was replaced all the way down Middle Road, all the way, I think it goes all the way to Morse's Lane, where your road is, I know it goes at least to.
At least to Burt, a little after Burt, maybe I think.
It goes a little fairway, at least.
Oh, fairway, I'm sorry, you're right.
At least fairway, right? And the trenches, and the road starting to buckle, and it's just going, so we need to, I mean, we think that, oh, look, you see, I got a million something, but no, you don't, because there's so many, so many other things I could be telling him, and hey, we need to talk into the board and say, we need to do X, Y, and Z, like the little side street, right? Right after Monmouth, Middlefield Place, it's a mess. That needs to get done, it's a reclaim job, it's a small job, he's got a little bit of money, maybe we can put that on a nearer agenda and get that done too.
Yep. Well, that's, again, if, like you said, if I'm gonna, I'll go off the bid and I'll put the reclaim off the bid as well, and then we can pick and choose what you want to do with reclaim, I'll just put in, you know, X amount of things or something for a reclaim and then.
But the problem with, so you got a little bit of, I, I forget what it is, like forty, thirty-five or forty grand left in your road paving line?
Yep.
That can get Middlefield Place done, I'm pretty sure.
With reclaiming, you mean, or paving and everything?
No, pave.
Yeah, well, if we do it, yeah, in house. Yeah. Yep.
We gotta get, we gotta spend it by June thirtieth.
Okay. We have forty grand in here?
No.
I think I remember having forty grand in here.
Mr. Kelly?
Also, we need a plan where we have some accounts that are in the negative, some accounts that are in the positive. We need a plan on how we're gonna balance it all out by June thirtieth.
So what Mr. Kelly's referring to is this, in the DPW's budget, there's line items that have run negative by a substantial amount, right? And there's gotta be some rationale why those line items are being expended that far above and beyond what the account line is there for, right? And I know that you look at it and say, well, if my budget's a million, I could just fang on the money at the end of the year and make everything work, as long as I stay at my budget, but again, it's coming down to this whole thing of how we're doing business, right?
Well, again, this is another thing that I've been doing for fourteen years like that, Kevin. I've never come to this board once and asked for extra money out of my budget, I never overspent my entire budget. Like some departments have, I don't want to say what, but never once came to this board and asked for extra money. So we keep track of our funding, I know some line, some go over, some don't, some, and that's just the way we do business every year, because sometimes it turns into this thing. We weren't planning on going over that, Kevin, but the road, you want it done right, we had to reclaim that, we had to put binary on top. So that's why that road paving line went way over, you know? But it was done.
That's not, that's not one of them to talk a deficit. That was not deficit.
That's a big one, that's a big one. Yeah, it is. That's the biggest one out.
Snow and ice is the biggest.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I thought we were talking about individual line items inside of DPW's budget, not what he's talking about. I mean, I know what we, when we did the paving of the three, Helen, Joseph, and Earl.
Yes, correct.
But we, I thought, when I looked at the road paving line item, there was still like thirty-five grand.
No. Negative. And I gave you an explanation, that's in that packet of where we spent all our root areas, which has, which grows.
All right, well, forget about the Middlefield Place one for right now, because I thought we had like thirty-five grand to go out and play with that.
But we're definitely gonna have to have a plan in all of that, because what might have been done for fourteen years, now we've got different people looking at us. Different accountants, different auditors, so.
Our direction, Mr. Kelly, was always do not overspend your budget, and the accounting department always went back and reclassed, so that anything that was negative, anything we left as positive, they took the money, so it all balanced out in the end. That's what our, we haven't had any other direction since then.
We don't spend it, we always put money back in the budget, it's not like, and this year, and again, this is another one, is fuel. Fuel is like an unknown. That could go up, go down. This year we got extra money in fuel, that money in fuel is gonna go towards that. So again, we watched the numbers and, again, we don't, you know what I mean? We, unfortunately, some of these line items go over, but again, sometimes it's an impossible thing, especially even fuel, how you gonna, if, if, if the prices go crazy, we might go over on that line item, you'll never, you can't, you know.
But you give the example.
Yep.
Mr. Gaspar did, where you buy four tires.
Yep. No, 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 I get, and I think that's gonna work out.
In the past.
Yep.
You put four to snow.
Yep.
Now we've gotta put two to highway, two to snow.
Okay, I'm good with that, yeah, I don't get a problem with that.
You do two trucks, it balances out.
No, no, I, it says it, doesn't matter.
It's the bill itself that we have to look at.
Yep.
It's a different, uh, it's different now that the auditors and the accounting rules, so it has to be done a lot more specifically and according to their rules. And so I'm just asking that you work with the accounting office to make a plan.
Can we, so with all this stuff, can I suggest that we like, for all our department heads that have to spend money on stuff, let's get a workshop, sit down, tell them everything that needs to be done, or a memo or something or other? So, because I think what's going on, here's what's going on. We're, we got budget problems, and so when we have budget problems, we gotta tighten up process. So if the process is as tight and buttoned up as possible, then it doesn't call into question what we're up to. You know, at the last meeting, we talked about, we want to do a full audit on economies and efficiencies, it's not to like bust people's chops, is that we want to know everything that's going, coming in and going out, so that when we make, when we build a budget, we then have the credibility to go before the finance committee and ask for the money, and then ultimately the taxpayer. This is just, you know, I think we've been all doing things so long a certain way, but I think now we gotta kind of shift and crank it up a little bit. One thing that, if you could put on your list, I know you guys are super busy, but it's just kind of an annoying thing for me, it's not, nothing you guys have done, but we've got a lot of like faded, burnt out signs that are like, you know, like, you know, the golf course sign.
No, we got a lot of like.
We got a lot of stuff. If you can get a crew out there, you know, take them down, it'd be better to have nothing than have stuff that looks terrible, right?
We actually do have some new ones, huh? We did get some new ones in there, but we just haven't, again.
As residents call, we usually replace those.
But that kind of stuff, you're driving around, I think like Berry Hill, there's some blown out signs and different, you know, you're driving around town, and like, oh, man, I, you're like, well, there, you drive by it every day, you kind of just forget about it, but I just think it's, it becomes.
Agree a hundred percent. It's annoy, it's annoying seeing some of these signs that are just decrepit and, you know, we, we have the money, and if, if we don't in your budget, Dan, then even if you accumulate the list, as Mr. Lona's talking about, instead of just taking down ones that like curve, you know, or, you know, driveway signs, you know, you know, warning about driveways on curves and stuff like that. Straighten them out, fix them up as best we can, make a list and get, compile a list of signs, and we're going to town meeting, right? And if, if we need to do ten thousand dollars for signs, to replace signs in this town, so be it. It is what it is, I mean, we're going to town right now for some of these expenditures, right? I mean, what's ten grand to, to make sure that the community looks good and, you know what I mean? And we got good signage up and, you know, there's no excuse for us to have signs up that from nineteen oh one that are all bent over and guardrails that look like crap, I mean, it just looks like we can't maintain the community, right? And it's not your fault, it's, it's just.
That's on us to say that that's a priority and just get the money to address that.
We'll get you the money, one way or another, right? I mean, we'll get you, I'm not expecting you to go, oh, you got, you're only giving me this much in my budget, now you want me to use ten thousand? I'm just using for instance, ten thousand bucks for signs. I get it, you're limited with the amount of money that we have nowadays for your budget and everybody else's budget, right? So if that's what we need to do, five grand, ten grand, whatever the amount of money is at, at a town meeting from free cash, that's what we do.
We should talk to Dana, and we had nice golf course signs, but we should have them at every, you know, South Main Street down there, you know, Christian River Valley Golf Course, a nice sign directing people, and we should even, what do we have, like eight restaurants in town, like you see on the highway?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, these places, like, maybe we can do some stuff like that, that would help some of our businesses or whatever, at a minimum.
That's kind of relatively cheap, it's not, like you're saying, ten thousand, it's not that crazy.
I'm just throwing.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't think it's that crazy to do, so.
Trying to help you, guy. You know what I mean? You say, you say it's not, right? But then you think about.
I know it does add up, but it does add up.
Signs to me, that adds up.
It does add up, really, guys, you don't realize, you know, that's what I told you, just even the pothole one, right? It's, it's crazy.
I can, I can probably, I can probably locate, as Mr. Lona's talking about, fifty of them that need to be replaced.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, no, I know, I know they're out there, but sometimes they go like this, and I'm like, eh, so much to do.
If you see it, yank it out of the garage, stick it in the truck.
Yeah, unless it's one that's saying, you know, you know, blind corner or driveway, whatever that sign is on curves, I mean, you gotta let people know, you can't just take people's signs away.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean?
But like I said, some of them we do have, I think, in stock, so we can get out there.
That, some of them just need to be strained out, new hole needs to be dug and strained out, and so it's back to being strained, instead of, you know.
All right, we're good. Anything else, gents?
No, I, I, I don't think Mr. Manat and Miss Silva's got an answer on freezing.
You've gotta take a vote to unfreeze.
Okay.
Just be conscientious, so I make a motion to unfreeze C Mass.
Do you want to hear what, like, we kind of, like I said, I just told you what, like highway, but C Mass we have.
All the contracts.
I just unfroze C Mass, you don't have to worry about it. Also, I'm making a motion to unfreeze C Mass and DPW's budget, and with.
And snow and ice.
No, snow and ice is still frozen.
You still have to pay the bonus payments though, so.
We have to pay the plow payments out of there, and then figure out how to deal with the deficit.
Okay, well, I'll unfreeze, I'll unfreeze snow and ice to pay the bonuses, period. No more expenditures.
Correct, which is done anyways, but we should have additional funds in C Mass this year as well. Again, recycling is, that line item is good, so I think we should have some funding in there left over, which would be, should be a good amount in that. Again, the reason, again, we kept it this way, because we just seen the trends, we watched the trends on it, because that's all based on market. And when Trump was messing with China and everything else, the, the prices start shooting up. When it, like Biden got in there, they went down, so it's kind of on the up climb now, so it was over a hundred a ton, I think it's.
They just renegotiate.
So now it's going, it might go drop back down, so again, that's a market thing, and I don't want to be without it, so it's kind of not the cut. But it's, that's a tough one too, because we've seen it decline, and now it might drop because of that, it's, it's crazy, so how, how that works.
Yeah, that's something that, that's something that none of us are smart enough to predict, so there is an inflation factor that we have in that number, right? So that we're not coming back going, you know, reserve fund, transfer.
But again, so that money, usually, like I said, even last year, I think, Kev, that's going back to the general fund, so that should be able to take care of. I mean, we can come up with somewhat of a rough number, what you're gonna have left over, so you guys know what you're gonna do.
I think the more just asking at this point, Dan, be conscientious of spending throughout the remainder of the year.
Yep.
I made a motion to unfreeze DPW's budget, C Mass's budget, and snow and ice, but no further expenditures in snow and ice other than bonuses.
Thanks, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, great. Thank you.
Have a good night, all right, thank you.
Tell the troops, thank you for their work.
Thank you.
All right, we have got FY twenty-six update. Jamie, we got some, Lions Committee took some action yesterday, I think it was, right?
They reviewed the very rough draft warrant, asked some questions about it. It still has to be formatted, there are some articles that have to be removed, some articles that are not really under my purview, that have to be inserted. They also reviewed the quote unquote, no change from last year, individual budgets, and approved those. And they are meeting again Monday and possibly Tuesday next week to go over everything. And I know the board's meeting Friday. There are a number of articles that are annual articles, like the consent agenda that goes through, that you do pretty much to, for example, to accept grants or chapter ninety money, and then there's the revolving fund articles and the stabilization, free cash articles, and then there's the budget. And as of last night, I heard that the school passed a budget, we haven't seen the line items yet in the budget, but they went from seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase to approximately a hundred and forty-one thousand dollar increase.
It's progress.
It's incredible.
I wish we could have got Old Colony to do this.
This is a good jumping off point.
It's a, it's, it's, it's a shame that K through eight budget increases a hundred and forty-one, and eight through twelve increases three hundred and fifty, and that's only our share, right? That is beyond me. I, I, I like Old Colony, I have nothing bad to say about Old Colony, I'm a graduate of Old Colony, my son's a graduate of Old Colony, my brother's a graduate of Old Colony, but that doesn't make it right, they just, you continue to spend over a million dollars a year, year over year, that, that's not sustainable. And their request from the Town of Acushnet, increase of, I think it's three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for fourth grade school, and don't give me the stuff, it's a vocational school, all your stuff has already been bought and paid for, so give me a break. That's two thirds of our Prop two and a half levy increase they've taken, two thirds. I don't know who thinks that's okay, but I surely don't. I mean, that's not, that is clearly unsustainable, you want, you need, that message needs to be sent to them ASAP, because one point two million increase year over year? I don't know what's going on, but that's not even close to what they should be doing.
As you know, we had multiple meetings with them, we have meetings on health insurance, we have meetings on what the town was looking at, we have meetings on how new growth was drying up, and it fell in defeat.
That's correct, but it is very unfair, when I look at the big picture, we made cuts, the school department's just demonstrated that they've made cuts, dramatic cuts, if the real increase was seven fifty, whatever that number incorporated before, that involved that seven fifty, but clearly coming in at one, up one forty-one. I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't know the last time Acushnet Public Schools' budget went up only a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. So that's, in my opinion, incredible. And, and, and quite honestly, I think it deserves a giant thank you, because this is the year that we really, really needed that help. And as long as that number's true, they are giving the board that one forty-one, it's a huge help this year for the town, and the town's people, quite honestly, so kudos to them for doing whatever they did to make it happen, hopefully it's, you know, maybe having dramatic impacts on it, but they clearly demonstrated they made cuts, we're gonna make cuts. We can't let the other Old Colony just say, this is what it is, suck it up, buttercup. Not make, not share in that pain.
I think while you're congratulating this, Acushnet Schools, you should also congratulate this board, and this board opened the books totally to both Old Colony and Acushnet Schools, and showed them what the financial picture was, as bleak as it was. And this board was asking for not only understanding, but was asking for collaboration. And I think Acushnet Schools answered. And I think Akushnet Schools answered.
Yeah, absolutely. So thank, we thank Mr. Loona, Mr. Hinckley, and I would also extend that, um, thank you to the finance committee, right? They put in a lot of hard work and dedication to the budgets. Um, and I know we haven't given them all of our budgets, because that's ultimately what it comes down to, is the board of selectmen to get through these budgets. Um, but kudos to our FinCon as well, right? Lot of, lot of hard work and individuals on our FinCon, so.
I, I, look, I, I don't disagree, I think it's great that we're at this number. But I still think, when I, when I see the budget, the school department budget, I think we've got, I think there's some structural issues there that still need to be addressed over time. I mean, to be honest with you, some of the, I gotta see what the final, the final final is, and who's getting impacted. You know, if it's gonna impact the children, then that's not a good budget, but it's not, I'm not an elected member of the school committee. It's, you know, if I wanted, I had that job, I got thrown out of that job thirty years ago, so, you know. Um, I think at the end of the day, there's gonna be a critical look at what the impact is to the kids, um, before I can wave any pom-poms. But I also think there's some structural issues there that I think the jury's still out on, so.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd agree with that extensively. Um, I think at the last finance committee meeting, there was a joint meeting with the school, I was there, um, as a representative of the board of selectmen. And I think all of us really put our heads together and understand that any kind of position that's gonna get caught shouldn't be student-facing. And I think we all were very clear, saying that there's not necessarily, not necessarily redundancies, but options where there were some administrative positions that could be removed or shortened that would have less of an impact on the student population. And I think it's very important where, no matter what, yes, any cut is gonna affect the overall process, but the least impactful should be applied, in my opinion. That's why I've always been saying, look at the teachers' last, we don't want bigger classroom sizes. We want the education of the children to be at the forefront, and if we can cut down on some administration positions, they're the only positions that aren't union, they can take on a little bit of an extra responsibility. I don't think making classroom sizes bigger by cutting teachers is the answer, I think it's low-hanging fruit. And I completely agree that I think an actual operational audit mentality needs to be looked at in this. And, you know, we all wanna support education, I think every member of this board here has mentioned how much we wanna support education, but we also have to do it within a budget that the Town of Akushnet can support. And I think it's important that everybody looks at everything and realizes that, yes, we want the best of the best, but sometimes the best of the best is above what we can actually provide, so let's try to streamline it.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, everything we do in town, in the Town of Akushnet, needs to be looked at from the, the lens, and, you know, Kevin says it all the time, the lens of the taxpayer. And if we choose a business model that, yes, would, would I love to hire, you know, the, the most highly qualified town administrator that could cost us potentially two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, like some of these other municipalities, and, you know, some superhero, uh, yeah, of course. But I think we're all self-aware enough to know that that's not something that we can afford. And if our business model is to either tap into existing talent within town, or our business model is to, um, bring somebody in who's younger, that we can help grow into a position, and then set them free to go to another community on somebody else's dime to make the next big paycheck, then that's, that's, it is what it is, right? But I just think we've gotta really view everything we do, uh, not from the lens of, well, we've always done it this way, and this is just the way it is. The more innovative we are, the more creative we are in our thinking, I think ultimately, um, you know, we'll, we'll be able to serve the taxpayer, so, anyway. But that said, um, I think on balance, thank you to the finance committee, thank you for the school committee and the administration for taking a critical look at this stuff. So with that said, Jamie, I think the, the operative thing is, this is still draft, draft, draft of this, uh, warrant. So there's gotta be tweaks, more tweaks from what?
A major probably shake, because this was put together with the, uh, lens, so to speak, of, um, a lot larger.
Yep.
Uh, uh, impact from the education sector.
Turn up. So I'm asking is, like, if we're gonna get another draft of this warrant, this is just a, can you just not put big draft across every page, it's a little distracting, maybe just like the bottom or something or other?
Can we make it a lighter shade of red?
It's just, it's just a little distracting for, for these old ones.
Well, no, well, when we come in, it would be, I'm gonna come in with the format, and it's.
And we're gonna do that Friday?
Yep.
Okay, so we need a, alright, good. Alright.
Can we, can we just talk about one thing?
Yeah, of course.
One article, and I know that I've had conversations with the fire chief about, it's trying to create another revolving fund for fire EMS, and it's only twenty-five thousand bucks for, like, unforeseen expenditures, like emergency repairs, like we replace an engine out of the reserve fund.
Yep.
I talked to Mr. Kelly this morning, I mean, enough with these revolving funds and articles every year, more and more articles and getting, just consuming our time. It's a simple philosophy to that twenty-five thousand bucks, I would actually say fifty thousand bucks would probably be better for us to carry in our fire EMS budget is, just take from EMS reserve receipt account, put fifty thousand dollars in a reserve fund, like we do with golf, there's a hundred there for golf. We do it for sewer, and we also do it for water. It's inside the budget, reserve fund, the only way it can get expended is come through approval from the board of selectmen, but it's inside of a budget, kills that article. There's no reason to have an article or a revolving fund.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to touch base on that too, I think, um, Chief Allen's ultimate goal, regardless of this, is being able to not have to wait until town meeting to get approval, so I think he'd be alright with that, as long as he can access it quicker.
It's in the budget, that's what we do with all the other ones, because if something, a water main break, we, what are we gonna do? Call a town meeting if we don't have enough money inside the budget to do it, so we carry, I think, sixty thousand in the water budget. Um, sewer's either sixty or a hundred thousand dollars, golf's a hundred thousand dollars, it's there for unforeseen reasons. And again, I'm like, so I talked to Chief Allen, and he's like, I don't care how it's done, it'd just be nice to do it and not hit the reserve fund like I did this year. Right? And I get it, I mean, he's, the, the money sitting, I forget what it is, one point four million in EMS reserve receipt accounts. We're gonna take a chunk of that to buy a fire engine, I think there's something in the others for that, right? To carry for a fire engine, for the debt, for that. If the money's sitting inside of a bank account, it's never, it's, just put it there.
Yeah.
And it sits there, and if he needs it, it's there. And twenty-five grand, we just spent twenty-one on an ambulance engine. I, I, I'm of the mindset for reserve fifty grand, he's gonna come to the board of selectmen for approval for expenditures like any other department that does when you have that kind of a line item carrying in your budget. Just do it that way, it gets rid of an article, I mean.
So what do we need to do?
Just re, just.
No, we, we can put it in the, uh.
The budget.
The budget. You do it for CATV too, we put the reserve.
Yeah, there's a reserve as well, it's all in the budget, I mean, what are we doing with these, we, we're going to town meeting now very soon. The next town administrator, a lot of fifty articles at town meeting, it takes us four hours at town meeting to get through it, because we got so many stupid articles that are just redundant, redundant, redundant.
So regarding Friday, going over the warrant, should we invite, should we invite Mr. Deacon, the moderator?
Uh, I hope he's back by then.
Okay.
He's, uh, he was away, and he sent his, uh, uh, excuse and good wishes, but.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna make sure he's.
He's taking a couple days vacation.
Nope, it's. Good film. Good, okay, cool.
I wish I was with him when, uh, I heard where he's going.
Alright, anything from selectmen's announcements?
Mr. Chairman, actually, yes. Um, sorry, once again, pulling out the phone for notes, I apologize.
It's a digital world.
Yeah, it is. Um, just wanna give residents a heads up, just in case they didn't see it. Uh, through conjunction with Operation Clean Suite, the beautification committee is doing a town-wide cleanup on June seventh. There is a website out there that you can pre-register, uh, they give you the information, but they're supplying the tools, the bags, the gloves, some pizzas, some doughnuts, so if you wanna help clean up your neighborhood, um, check that out. Uh, it is on social media, on our town website, and also on other various town boards, um, but I'll see out there. I also believe that Scott Daggett is organizing something for.
Lake Street.
The seventeenth on Lake Street to do the same thing, um, as much as people try to keep that clean. Um, there have been people dumping stuff on the trail and making a mess out of that parking lot again. So if anybody in town wants to help out, same thing, gloves and bags will be available at Lake Street as well.
Great, and I know, I saw the crew out there today cutting grass and, you know, make sure that everything's weed-whacked and all that jazz and make sure. Mr. Gasper?
No, I don't, but I, I'll touch on what is a little disturbing seeing Lake Street, um, some people disrespecting the property, right? Um, so I know we're getting the fiber optic cable running down Lake Street now, so I'm, I think we'll be setting up some cameras down here as well. So hopefully, the people that are doing this, we can, we can catch them and, you know, we can find them as well. So I would just ask for people to be a little bit more, you know, honorable, honorable when you're down there doing things. There's trash cans there, put the stuff in the trash cans, recycle bins are down here as well, I mean, there's no need to be throwing things or leaving things behind. Clean up after yourself, please.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, next meeting is gonna be Friday, and then we have a, the selectmen's meeting on May twenty-seventh. We get an executive session on here, we still have to do that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Quick one.
Alright, uh, is there?
Can, can we, so for Friday's, Friday's meeting, we can put some executive sessions, because I think it's.
Yes.
For, 'cause it's gonna affect some, you know, contract negotiations and budgets and things of the like.
I have asked for.
Conversation.
Please to be on there.
We'll put that on first.
Yep.
And then we'll come out and do budgets and warrant.
Do you wanna see if Darren can be there?
That's the plan.
If we need him.
Who's Darren?
Darren Klein.
Oh, sure.
If he's available.
Yeah, sure, whatever you wanna do.
Alright, sounds good. Uh, we got executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, subsection A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining fire grievance. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and the board will not return to public session at the conclusion of the executive session. Roll call, roll call vote, Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
Roll call vote, Mr. Hinckley?
Yes.
And I am a yes, we are now in executive session, we will not.